Twenty-four, we were all here, so there won't be roll call. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. It may be broadcasted or rebroadcasted on Westford Cat. As always, we'll start with open forum. Joe, anything?
Just if anybody is here for seven Carl Thompson Road, they have requested to continue to the October seventh meeting of the board. It was actually a request from the engineering office for some additional time to review materials, so they accommodate our requests, which we're thankful for.
All right. Anybody from the board, anything for open forum?
I have nothing.
Oh, Joni?
Yeah. Jenny Ray from NEMCOG asked me, everybody will see it on email, but asked me to invite everybody on the sixteenth of October to celebrate sixty years of the regional planning in northern Middlesex County. They, their annual meeting to be held at the Tingsborough Old Town Hall from seven to nine. Refreshments will be served. I unfortunately will not be able to be there, because I'm going to be away that week, but if anyone else is interested, it sounds like a great opportunity.
Great, cool. Sixteenth, you said?
Sixteenth.
Okay. I might go. Anybody else? All right, saying nothing, we'll move on to our first public hearing. As Joe has said, PB two four one five, seven Carl Thompson Way. I'm going to motion to continue this to, what one is it, Joe?
October seventh.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. You know what, I will take, unless there's a disagreement with the board, why don't we take item B of general business, PB one nine two three, seventy-three Nutting Road, Wendell Place, take that out of order since Mr. Waterman's here.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Here with me are representing Toll Brothers, the applicant, and with me is Jess Marsh, representative of Toll Brothers. We've been working with Joe at the staff and the staff at the planning office, engineering department, DPW, to establish the bond for Wendell Place. Includes in your packet, there's kind of a multi-step process where you establish the full bond, which is if you've never built anything on site, what the bond would be, and then you submit a second bond, which is last of the items that they've completed. If anyone's been down Nutting Road, they've been very busy, the roads are in, they're paved, the drainage is installed, the utilities are, and the infrastructure is in place. Obviously, there's just like landscaping, curving sidewalks, street trees, finalizing some of the drainage items, looming and seeding, and you know, kind of that, but they are ready to start housing construction, and so that second bond establishes the bond that this board holds on to until those items are completed. Simultaneously, we requested a lot release request, which is part of the covenant that's on record, where you first have to establish the bond, and then you can release the lots at this board's satisfaction. Be happy to answer any questions. We went through the bond with engineering a couple times. We are comfortable that, they're comfortable with the bond. We don't have any comments or questions, and would ask that the board establish the bond and release the lots.
Thank you. Joe?
Nothing really, Mr. Chair. Project's been going pretty smoothly thus far. Communication's been going very well with the developers, so no complaints on our end.
All right. Bob, any questions? Nope. Joni?
No, thank you.
Darren?
As long as engineering is happy with the bond figures, that's, there's a couple back and forth, as Mr. Waterman mentioned, but they're happy now.
Joe, how do you want us to do this? Do we want to release the covenants, establish the bond, and then?
Release the lots.
Release the lots, okay. In three motions or one motion?
However you're comfortable, Mr. Chair, it sounded like you had it pretty well in order there, so as long as we have the number associated with the bond amount.
Yep. All right, so first, can I get a motion to release the covenants for seventy-three Nutting Road, Wendell Place?
So moved. Second.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone have the number there? Can we get a motion to establish a bond on that amount?
Three ninety-four, four ninety?
Ninety-seven, yep.
Make that more?
I think it's the one point two seven four, nine six six. The three ninety-four is the fifteen percent retainage which gets held regardless of what we complete on site.
Until it's accepted as a public.
Till the street acceptance, correct.
All right, so what is it, the one-two-seven-four number?
Yep, nine-six-six point seven-one.
So there are motion to establish a bond for seventy-three Nutting Road, Wendell Place, the amount of one million, two-hundred-seventy-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and seventy-one cents?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And lastly, motion to release lots one through sixteen and lots eighteen through twenty-one. Well, from the covenant, we've already?
Seventeen for a model.
But we, oh, okay, so we're releasing them, but we're establishing the bond?
Correct.
So those won't be, okay.
Yep.
So motion to release lots one through sixteen and lots eighteen through twenty-three from the covenant of seventy-three Nutting Road, Wendell Place.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Okay, back to our public hearing items, continued from August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, PB two four zero three, men zoning law, zoning by law to establish and modify parking regulations for several uses. Joe, you have an update on this?
Sure, Mr. Chair. So just by way of introduction, this was brought up during your last meeting, August nineteenth. From that meeting, you requested that we take a little bit of a deeper dive into the business professional office use category and look at medical offices. We did some homework on that and have some potential options for you to consideration this evening. In communicating with town council, as an abundance of caution, we did post an additional legal ad. You may have noticed it in the public hearing notice under the temporary trailers in your packet, so we just did one ad, one noting the potential change under temporary trailers for that zoning by law amendment, as well as looking at medical office, both under parking twenty-four oh three and the uses twenty-four seventeen. So we have that in there, just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that in your packet. We'll just go over some of the changes, it seemed like you were all requesting from the last meeting. I guess this would cover both twenty-four oh three and twenty-four seventeen, if we don't mind. They do kind of go together in some ways, where we're talking about a particular use, the parking kind of goes together. So we had a couple small changes to some definitions, brewery, distillery, or winery. We took out the words at no charge and with the thought that perhaps there could be a charge on some samples. Contract desire, we took out of scrap materials, just those three words in that definition. Given the connotation it could give. Looking specifically at the parking for brewery, distillery, or winery, we did add some element of trying to capture the parking that could be generated from folks going there for tasting, so we added some additional park requirements on top of the gross floor area that you would see on, say, production space to capture the tasting area. For use allowances for some of these different uses, massage establishment, you're looking at having it as an allowed use as opposed to a special permit option for massage establishments. In the three districts, we proposed commercial highway, industrial highway, industrial A, and that's based on where we find those uses now. Brew pubs, we matched what the use allowance is for restaurants, it seemed the desire of the board there, including the proposed change for restaurants in the IH, so it would be an allowed use there. Industrial uses, contractors yard, we had the discussion on the commercial highway, industrial highway, seemed to recommend not allowing in the commercial highway, but having a special permit option to go in front of this board in industrial highway. And finally, under business professional office, we did, again, take a look at some of his properties specific to town. Have a couple of quick numbers for you. Here, we looked at Emerson property, Circle Health, which also has Jean Dark on it, and we did, took a look at Old Boston Square. There are thirty-four different units on that property, but thirteen of them would probably fall under a medical office definition, so we said, why not look at that and see what's, what's happening there. Again, the usage in twenty nineteen, pre-COVID pandemic, twenty twenty-three, again, aerial imagery during the day, during, you know, middle of the week, where you'd probably expect to see, you know, people in that use. So again, we have numbers compared to what there's onsite versus what was acquired. You generally see a little less parking provided onsite versus what one per two hundred would provide, but a decent amount were there at the Emerson property in both twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-three, a little less at the others, a little more in twenty nineteen versus twenty-three. Looked at a couple of different options of what it would look like, you know, if you did try to look at a modified parking requirement, you do start getting up towards a higher amount, right at a hundred percent in some cases, or higher. So overall, we, you know, didn't look at other communities and try to tailor a definition, ones that we thought would capture those uses for your consideration. Mirrored where business professional offices are allowed now, it seems like those would be good locations for medical offices, and we kept the parking at one per two hundred square feet. It seemed a more conservative approach, and that way presenting a town meeting, it's we're specifically just calling this out from the definition of business professional office and leaving it kind of as is on its own, and other business professional office type of use, if you will, like real estate office, attorney offices, what have you, their parking requirement would see a little relief from the one per two hundred requirement today. So that's kind of all the changes in a nutshell under both twenty-four oh three and twenty-four seventeen. So I think that captured everything the board was looking for from the last meeting, but if there's anything else you want, or if we missed something, obviously, we're going to go discuss it now.
Thank you, Joe. Bob, I'll start with you.
Yeah, no, I think setting off the business separately sets us up for the future, since they seem to be differentiating themselves from all the other professional office spaces. So as we deal with maybe changing the ratio for professional office spaces, medical continues to be the, the one with the high occupancy rate, which makes sense, it has to be in person. Only one minor suggestion, where I think in the table you showed, you called it a tasting area, I would call it tasting slash dining, just because some of the, that's kind of what it is for the brew pubs, it's as much of a restaurant as it is a sampling and tasting area, and they may actually have both areas, in fact, so that was the only thing I had. Otherwise, looks really good. I like the ratios, and I think I like the structure for, that sets us up for the future. Obviously, we may have to adjust it, but at this point, I think based upon all the information you gave us, it's based upon good, strong foundation of fact based on other communities, and I, and as I say, I like the structure of how you did the differentiation of the types of areas in those, those three new, the brew pubs, the distilleries, et cetera. So it was good.
Joni?
I, no, I have nothing. I think the staff did a great job, and I'm very happy with what we see, so thank you.
Joe?
No, I like Bob's amendment there, and I agree with his perspective. Job well done.
Joe, just one question on the, on the brew pub, brewery, distillery, you know, it talks about, you know, the square footage of the tasting area, or tasting slash eating area, is not included in calculating the square footage, but is for purposes of zoning, compliance, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that parking is a consideration in there.
For brew pubs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's, I want, you know, that's probably the main, if there's seating outside for sixty people, to make sure that the parking.
Right, if there's more seats, yeah.
To capture outdoor seating, as we. Just make sure that that's included in that language, but otherwise, I like it.
I agree, just one thought to throw out there, I mean, do we think that's enough? So brewery, distillery, same as the brew pub, one seat, one parking space per five seats. Now, obviously, there's a little bit more parking because of the floor area, right, which could be workers working and then staff, but when you go to a place like that, you know, I'm usually not bringing four people with me.
Right.
You know, so I just, I don't want to, and I could be way off, and maybe there's enough parking spaces when we consider the one per four hundred square feet additional, but is that enough? You know?
Yeah, I was thinking of the same thing with five. What's the average party, maybe two and a half?
Restaurant definition has a one per three, so we could match that, and it's streamlined if that was.
That might, that might make sense, match the restaurant.
Yeah, but you have that, Bob, but then you also have the additional, right, you have the plus one per four hundred square feet of gross floor area, so you are getting more spaces, right? But you're also doing other things there.
Well, I guess the, I look at the one per four hundred as, that's staff, that's, that's how you, you add up how many staff for the space, and the other one in terms of dining seats or tasting seats, that's based on customers.
Mm-hmm.
And so, yeah, there's a slight overlap there, but I, I think it works out pretty well since there's both types.
And so?
Do you think three is appropriate, Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I throw it out there. I'd say at least four, but maybe three. Again, so there is the overflow, and you know, not everyone's going to be always working at the same time, you go at nighttime, maybe they're not brewing beer at nighttime.
Yeah.
But I would feel more comfortable, maybe one per four.
I think four is a good compromise.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
That would be for both the brewery, distillery, winery.
I would say so, yeah.
Good.
Okay. Anybody from the public have any thoughts or discussion on this matter? What do you want us to do, Joe? Do we want to keep the public hearing open? Do you want to agree on this based upon?
I'm assuming you would like a report and recommendation for the next meeting, so you're, you're welcome to close it. If there was any, for any reason, you wanted to make any changes at the next meeting.
I mean, the next meeting is just weeks before the town meeting.
Yeah, it'll only be two weeks before it's our meeting, so.
So probably close this public hearing.
Yeah.
We have one to open tonight, though, right?
Correct, under the.
So we're going to be continuing at least one anyway, right?
If you would like, yeah.
I mean, it's just been our historically precedent, I was, is to leave that open for two meetings, but doesn't mean we have to do it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'd like to, right? So the thirtieth is our next meeting? I'm sorry.
October seventh.
Second.
Second, where am I?
So we'll have three weeks in between this meeting and.
Historically, we had more meetings leading up to town meeting, because we were close together. Now, we've, we're meeting about once a month, so.
Well, that's coming to an end this month, I think, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't see any reason to keep this one open.
So why don't we motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
We, let's see, directing staff to write a recommendation report based upon the information we received this evening?
And as amended this evening.
Yep.
All right.
And I assume that would be for both twenty-four oh three and for twenty-four seventeen?
Yes, agreement, yeah. Yep. So we re, let's re, we reclose the public hearings.
I'll move that we, that we close the public hearing on PB twenty-four seventeen.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And directing staff to prepare the report, same as PB twenty-four, right?
Thank you.
And so now we are.
I will move that we waive the reading of the public hearing notice on PB twenty-four twenty-two.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll move that we open PB twenty-four twenty-two.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So for this one, it's a really, hopefully straightforward change. It came out of the attorney general office's review of our MBTA communities by law, so as a part of their review for that particular by law, they scrub our entire zoning by law to make sure there's no conflicts that would have any kind of impact on multifamily development. While they didn't find anything regarding that, they did find this section here is being, I guess, in conflict with Mass General law, chapter forty-eight, where there's an allowance for a temporary trailer to be up to twelve months in an instance where there's, you know, a fire or some other catastrophe, where you're having your home rebuilt. Our zoning by law only allows for six months currently, so this would simply be changing it from the allowance of a temporary trailer in that circumstance for, from six months to twelve months. So that's it, that's the entirety of the change, changing it six to a twelve.
All right. For the board, Bob, anything on this?
No, I'm just left with the curious question of how do we end up in conflict with Mass General Law, and what other aspects of our zoning is in conflict with Mass General Law, but that's it. I mean, I'm fine with this, makes sense.
And I hope the attorney general.
I think I talked to Jeff and Joe about this last month, and it just makes sense given our building season here, that six months is probably too short, so twelve months kind of makes a lot more sense given our weather and everything, so, yeah, I mean, it's good.
Yeah, we hope the attorney general's office found any other things we may have had in conflict, but if this was the only thing they came back with, then I think we're doing okay.
How do you?
Took it as a win.
Joni?
Yeah, no, I have nothing.
No issues. Darren?
Just a suggestion, it says the proposed amendments description, it's halfway through, it says specifically the town current allows for, I think that has to be currently, but the wording of that sentence is specifically the town currently allows the use of temporary trailers as use of a temporary residence. I would say maybe change that, allows the use of a temp, of temporary trailers for, or to be used as a temporary residence? It's just kind of a weird sentence.
Yeah.
Or for use as a temporary residence? I think that clarifies a little bit better. You see what I'm talking about?
I do.
Yeah, there's the double use.
So just recommend changing that sentence wording right there, just to make it a little more clear. Public comment?
Yes, anyone from the public have a comment on this?
Trailers?
Trailers, sale or rent?
We're continuing this one yet?
We'll continue this one.
I'll move that we continue PB twenty-four twenty-two to our October second meeting here in meeting room two oh one at six, seven PM.
So, second.
Motion second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like a report and recommendation for that?
Yes, I think we'll be ready for that. I don't know, there'll be much discussion then. Okay, moving right along, general business, PB two four two four, eighteen and twenty St. Paul Lane, Balding Hill Estates, to adjust lot line to accommodate a new driveway side entry garage. We do have a uncolored plan from Mr. Schlegger, it doesn't really describe, show the boundary that well, but Joe was able to point it out to me since it's a minor change.
Yeah, if you blink, you miss it. It's just a small pivot, I guess, in the, in between what they're calling eighteen A and nineteen A, it's eighteen and twenty St. Paul Lane. So from the back, it doesn't change to the front, it changes approximately two feet there, and that was to accommodate a side entrance garage on this new dwelling. I guess they originally thought they were going to have a front entrance garage, but now with the side entrance garage to accommodate turnaround the driveway, they had this small change to the property line here.
Any questions, anybody?
Straightforward.
Motion to approve the A and R with no consideration for zoning?
Second.
So moved.
Moved second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, we've covered B. Item C, discussion for non-binding recommendation to the select board pertaining to street acceptance request for Cloverleaf Lane. Now, it's my understanding they went to select board for a select board to send them back to us, for us to give a recommendation.
Right, so the process involves the, the select board stated their intention to lay it out as a public way, the next step in the process is they remanded to you folks for a non-binding recommendation. We will say that this particular subdivision, it always came through with the intention to be a public way, that was part of the record, they've had a very successful, I'd say, construction process, keeping engineering in the loop. Engineering department has no issues or concerns with this, it actually went very, I don't, seamlessly, I'd say, so we have no concerns with this particular subdivision.
All right, any questions, Bob?
No.
Joni?
No, nothing.
No, no questions. All right, so is there a motion to recommend to the select board to accept Cloverleaf Lane as a public way?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Lastly, for general business, discussion for possible action regarding the adoption of a fee schedule related to the MBTA communities multifamily overlay district. Jeffrey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you are aware, the AG did approve our MIC mod by law, but right now, we currently don't exactly have a fee schedule for, we suspect there'll be possibly a few applications coming in once the EO HLC approves, hopefully, our amendment, but right now, under our current fee schedule, the portions that relate to multifamily housing may be buried in our subdivision rules and regs, and so we were, we saw advice from council, it's totally legitimate for you folks to propose a sort of standalone fee schedule that covers the MBTA communities. Otherwise, it's very possible under a current fee schedule, say, a two-hundred unit development could generate a hundred twenty thousand dollars in application fees, which some people may say, oh, that's great, but we cannot justify it, it's, it's not reasonable, there's no rational nexus for that. So our assistant planner, Sierra, she did a lot of research, she looked at a number of different communities, looked at what the going rates were, so to speak, for multifamily housing, and she suggested, and we agree with her approach, to at least start the conversation with you folks, it would put us, if you throw out the high, you throw out the low from other communities, the proposal is a base fee of fifteen hundred dollars with an additional fifty dollars per multifamily dwelling unit, it would kind of put us pretty much in the middle of the pack. We think it's a reasonable fee, there would be a lot of staff involvement and coordination. Another thing we'd like to suggest is we want to encourage the conceptual discussions, so like with your preliminary subdivision process, we would like to charge, say, a modest concept fee, five hundred dollars. We're open to suggestion from you folks, but any of those fees would then be applied towards the later fee if they come in for the public hearing, you know, to do that process. So again, we don't want to create a disincentive for having those earlier conversations, we think it's important, we think this puts us in the middle, we think it's a good start to at least have that conversation, and as always, as you folks know, you eventually always get inundated with requests for, say, some modifications or minor changes, so this just mirrors the, what we have in place for those administrative changes right now, modification to pry approval. Obviously, if it results in changing the number of units, that's a separate conversation, that wouldn't necessarily fall under just minor, if you're adding units, that's, that's a different thing, so, didn't know if you wanted to. We also have some consideration in case there is mixed use development, this also tends to follow some of the other example communities, so we think this fee is kind of putting us consistently somewhere in the middle of the pack there, and we think it's at least a good start. We are concerned that we could very shortly get some applications, and so we want to, if possible, at least have something on the books before it comes in. We're certainly open to changes or even amending this, but we want to at least have the conversation tonight before we get an application in.
Great. Do we, what do we charge for like a preliminary subdivision? Is it the same as a subdivision filing, or?
No, so I don't, no, we charge, it is based on the number of lots, I believe, but it does get deducted from the definitive.
So same type of?
So it's a similar concept, because again, you folks would, in the past, the plan board has appreciated the preliminary subdivision, you know, you get a lot of those questions and concerns mapped out before they do all the detailed engineering and stormwater, so we think it, it's a better process, it results in fewer iterations, and I think most applicants are more willing. most applicants are more willing to make more changes and be more accommodating to comments and requests of the board, before they've done that full detailed layout, analysis, and drainage calculations. They're less vested, in a, in a sense, at that point.
Well, I know you haven't had a full application yet, I'm assuming you anticipate this would cover your office's expenses on an application, or partially?
No, we believe it would at least administratively cover much of it, and we are, you know, willing to be open, we figure what would make sense is as we get these first few in, we would probably try to make some effort, kind of tracking.
Yeah.
And see if it warrants adjustment, but we just don't have that, that data right now. We just think this is a good place to start.
Okay, great. Bob?
I'm, I'm sitting here looking at this, in my mind, I'm wondering if fifty is, is a tad too light to start with, I'm thinking seventy-five or a hundred. We always get requests to reduce, we're not going to get a request to increase. I'd rather, at this time, given our concern about the budget, I'd just like to consider fifty versus a hundred and, and see what the differences might be, and if that's justified, recognizing that people will come in, if it's not, if they don't, if they feel that's high, they'll ask us to lower it, and we can. But this, at least this gives us the ability to try to collect an amount of money to, to make up our, our costs.
So, what I will say is, we do anticipate, certainly for the larger projects, that there would be third-party peer review, and those would have separate fees, that would not be, that would be in addition to this. What I will say is, if we took that two hundred unit example, I think this example would put it somewhere around, is it eleven thousand, change or so, which is not insignificant in terms of, if you look at the, the staff time and cost, there would be a lot of work in that, but I'm, I'm just saying, you know, I think it's around eleven thousand or so for what is site plan, essentially a site plan review process.
Yeah, a hundred dollars a unit, you're three hundred units, a lot of money.
And I just will say, it did, this did kind of put us fairly squarely in the middle of what other communities are doing.
Yeah, I'm seeing, I'm looking at that, it's.
The opposite side of that is that, that development is very valuable in this town, right? So, I mean, I think. Yeah, I, I don't know that that is a fairly high administrative fee, but I don't know that that would turn away a developer from a two hundred or three hundred unit development, right? It's not that big of a barrier.
Yeah, but if, I mean, if, could we justify it, though, right? Can we justify, would we, would we get challenged?
We know we can't justify a hundred twenty thousand dollars. So, I think if, if you're in the middle, so to speak, I think you're on safe ground, it depends how far you want to push that, and then philosophically, I'll throw out there, there's a couple of ways to approach fee schedules. Are you trying to simply offset the, the staff time? Are you?
Engineering, right?
It should, and engineering may review it as well, other departments may review it, but keep in mind, too, that there are also other fees that are involved in that review process when there's a building permit application, and all, all those other departments may have their review. So, on the one hand, we don't want to create a disincentive, and on the other, sure, in a large project, it may not be as detrimental as a consideration, you know, for a large-scale project. But I will say, we have had a number of folks reach out to us, prospective applicants, eyeing our current fee schedule, and kind of wondering, like, is there anything that covers this yet? Because it seems like this would be well over a hundred thousand dollars to go to planning board, which should be, in theory, a sixty-day turnaround process, aside from, you know, technical reviews that may extend it, so.
I like the approach, I like looking at the other communities and what they've done, and kind of being right in the middle there.
I'm not afraid of being higher, either.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm also comfortable with the recommendation, too, but I'm, I'm amenable to anything.
I think it's, I think it's a good point that, you know, we can revisit this once we get a couple under, under our belts, too. Yep. I agree. Tony, thoughts?
Yeah, no, I agree, as long as we can revisit it, and you can track the first few, see how it, if this works, then great, if it doesn't, then we'll adjust it.
So it's a fairly simple process, because we're not changing any part of the subdivision rules and regs, it's just a fairly administrative thing, as long as it's on the agenda, we would then clock it in with the town clerk, so it legally exists, so to speak, but we can certainly, there's a lot of freedom to update it if, you know, if, as we, say, go through the first one, and say it's a staggering amount of time, you know, then maybe we can revisit it, but, and if you think it's too low to start, you know, we're open to that, too, I just, we certainly feel, we thought we should at least put out something that is very defensible for, for the start, at least.
Yeah. No, I agree.
Yeah, so if we're going to go with the recommendation and, and not go higher out of the gate, as Bob said, maybe, maybe we should be cognizant of that, if we do get an ask for a reduction in the first few, because it's like, you know, it's sort of untested waters, so in the spirit, in the, in the interest of science, as, as they say, then maybe we don't give any reductions for the first handful, because, because we're going to measure the time invested by town staff and compare that against the fee schedule, right? So, and maybe we put this on, on the agenda after we have two or three of these under our belt, and say, where, where are we at?
I think that makes sense.
Okay.
You good with that, Bob?
Yeah, it's just, I mean, it's looking at the low and the high, I was also trying to look at a market basket of communities, similar to us, and they were really all over the place. You know, you can look at the fee per unit, but then you got the base fee, and it's hard to see any kind of a consistent pattern.
Yeah.
But I'm just.
I don't disagree.
I just, I just, I hear the concerns up there right now, because of us waiving fees on certain developments at a time where we just cut a lot of programs in the schools, people are.
Sensitive, yeah.
Sensitive to what we're, we're waiving, or what we're charging for fees, or undercharging for fees, is probably a better way to put it.
Well, and, and to that point, I think we saw in that one preliminary conversation that we did have come before us, you know, that, the, what is that, it's like a old stable or an old carriage house or something like that?
Yes.
Like, I could see things like that, that the community desires to keep intact, becoming rabbit holes that consume a lot of town staff time, and conversations around things that have really nothing to do with the building itself, or the setbacks, or any of the things that we tend to talk about here, but have to do with preserving some piece of historic Westford, those areas can involve a lot of time, I think, sometimes.
It, it can, but to that point, too, I might always devil's advocate, to that point, too, though, that isn't something that we have built in, that you could require an applicant to, you know, reuse, you know, we don't currently, in my opinion, have that authority. So that could be a reason, if they come in and they have a less efficient, or that they might turn in to even ask for waivers, or some reduction, even if it does take more staff time, you know what I mean? So it's, I don't think anything is quite so simple.
Yeah.
As it seems.
Yeah, fair enough. All right.
All right, so do you want a motion on this recommendation?
We would love a motion on this one, sir.
All right, we have a motion to approve the new planning board fee schedule for the MBTA Communities Multifamily Overlay District.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much, we'll get that clocked in, and we'll try to, as they come in, gather data for, you know, have to get, I'd say, at least two under our belt, and see if it needs adjustment.
Great, terrific.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any minutes or correspondence, so unless anybody has anything else.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion, second, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.